You got team, bring your city down to meeting order. If you're by head, we'll be in. We're all thankful that Sam was nervous for prayer protection and our family, citizens, home of Bill. All the workers, we pray that the team bless us, continue to bless the city. Pray that we keep, we keep you on our hearts and minds as we go about business and life taking. Please pray for that. Alright, we need to approve the dividend.
Oh, okay.
I said. Big period. Then, then, and we'll come back, and, and. My old business, uh, good business, first thing in the house, package. We've got an old backhoe that paid one of, uh, so they can do dishes and big enough stuff. Just a front mower and a backhoe. Joe said we need another one. He got a price from the Yanks. Uh, they're gonna give us thirty-six thousand five hundred dollars for it. The price for the new one is a hundred and ten thousand six hundred twenty-one, so that leaves us seventy-four thousand one hundred twenty-one dollars. The finance paper work is my interview, Sam, do?
No, it's just reported.
Did they say what the papers will be?
They, they did, because they didn't know how it went, they just said it's closed.
But they did say they would finance it.
Yes, yes.
I saw him on the backhoe, yes, two of them yesterday, that, that's the old backhoe.
Yes.
But still running, but it's.
They just got it back on, and Joe said the transmission about down, so he wanted to try it for it. Or play it, play it.
So, that's what Joe asked for, uh, county done approved it. Now, I said we don't have the financing information in front of us. We can get that, you know, if we can get, I think we have to approve it, but.
Yes.
Finance. I'm, I'm, we gotta have that. I'm reading different options, so we're all.
Option, okay.
So, without that, nothing to prove, so, and, and all the things, the financing option.
I'm looking at minus option.
If it's printer down, no. I ain't there on the last day.
These are managed, um, uh, you know, so. Uh, next thing on the list is qualifying teams. I thought that we would have to change them, uh, with increases in the pay, but Lane said we don't. This is what we, they were the last selection. So we approve the, keep the qualifying, the society.
Oh, well, so fourteen percent, let's get that for each.
If, if.
Oh, fourteen, fifteen, four, five, sixteen, seventeen.
And then, so, I mean, I'll say. All in favor?
Aye.
What, what are the, uh, what please?
I need to.
Okay. Alright. The next thing on the list is, uh, the worst civil problems.
Fire.
Alright, alright, take it off. Alright, uh, Danny has two old fire trucks that, uh, are close to being out of commission, and he doesn't mean. They're in the city's name, and he would like to auction off. He thinks he can get enough, he wants to buy a new job as a lot, which is about twelve thousand dollars. If he sells the fire trucks, they'll have the money to buy a new job for life. But, they didn't have permission to auction off the two old fire trucks.
I would promote that we give him permission to auction off the two old fire trucks.
I'll say. Alright, all in favor? We should carry it. Now, the worst civil problem. This. Some ventilation for current season, there's a letter in there about it, about the project and the match of crimes, and, uh, we submitted my statements to the VFA for allowing for our match of heart, and, um, over in part, we're going in part of our lead, uh, basically granted, but we committed that, but we need to go ahead and bid the project out, uh, even though we won't award it until the funding is secured for it. But we gotta start the process of bidding it out, because there's a deadline, and we have to complete it by next year. And so, if we wait until we get funding secured to start bidding process, that will put us a couple months behind. So, uh, they've given us three options, but they're, they're recommending we proceed with option one, which is bid out the project, uh, before notification of funding availability from VFA, but we're waiting until notification of VFA before reporting the contract and contractor. But that's what the next step will be, we could be Chad, working on the bid, and working with the engineers, uh, and my statements, uh, and such, with great permission to work out the bid. So, we need to approve option one before us, for, uh, so we can wait for the next step to go up.
Uh, it's, uh, pretty rough, uh, for, for currency.
Alright, we have second. Start. All in favor?
Aye.
Any others? Alright, we should carry it. We got. Okay. Alright, um, Chief, Chief, who's on here? Who want to go? Will, you got anything?
Yeah, I have.
Alright, Danny, you got anything?
Hey, this is Hunter.
Alright.
Thank you. Um, just wanna say good evening to everybody. This, uh, one thing that I would like to, um, see with the council is that, um, sometimes, uh, when we have meetings at school, or we make a presentation, it's like, we have the, uh, the budget, and if you would present the budget in a presentation type format, so maybe the council or the city could look at, maybe it's like a screen up there, a TV screen, you could put a computer attached to it, so that way, when we discuss the budget, it won't just be about numbers, you can isolate a presentation that maybe would make it give more clarity and more understanding, not only to the council, but also to the citizens that's at the meeting, um, um, and also the citizens that's going down and watching. That is one of my, one thing that, you know, I can stop at, is something like that. Um, another thing that I had, um, question, uh, for Sam, um, and I know we haven't started paving the roads that's been switched right here, but, uh, how soon can we, uh, like, when do you, how soon do you start another list of other roads that needs to be paid? Or is it after these roads are paid, or in?
Well, they just sent me an email yesterday about the new twenty-two-six L M application. So, I think it's next week, you can start applying for that, and you can add them together, like, we got nothing to do with the other one yet, because I got to get the quotes, or to somebody to pay it, get somebody to do that, and then, we can add more roads through the twenty-two-six money also, because it's a little bit.
Okay, so which, but, um, why are you preparing the recommendation with any other streets that need to be paid?
Not yet, not now, because those are what we have to, but when I fill this new one out, then we can, we can, and then later, some of the twenty-two-one, but I'll get time to.
Wasn't there a study or something done, somebody ran it, it's like, on the roads? One time we had a list of, from the worst, you know, the, the top of the list, the worst roads on the map, that was a long time ago. We need to, we need to do that again. We need to, you know, a couple of council members, would you like to be on that, and maybe get Joe and James and ride around, and, uh, we can put something there for where we're asking, you know, citizens, get in contact by the roads, if you want to give James and Joe a ride around and look through the streets, and with what they've been repairing already, you know, patching, and what's the worst roads and rank them from worst to best, you know, the top ten roads that are worse, we'll, we'll make a list, and that's, that's our list of top to bottom. So, yeah, we'll give it, change it, go, we have time, and, and let's ride, and Joe can get, you know, get a roadmap, and help drive, write down names, and then rank them, you know, that worst, you know, and we'll put those at the top of the list.
Yeah, we know most, those are most of the codes in that era.
Yeah.
All of them. That road that goes to, that, that thing, that dark road, it's been on the best forever, and then it would always, oh, get here, it skipped or something, it's deep.
Yeah, that's the worst one, I think, out past, you know, the water, it was extinct, really too extinct.
Yeah. And so, we can do that, and, um, another.
And then I'll know if you want to sit on that next application.
Right. The worst ones. Thank you, thank you so much, appreciate that. Um, the other thing that I have was, and I, because I asked you, man, I looked at you and she, you bring me a copy of the agenda, so that we got a lot of agenda at the time, and she did do that, so to give us opportunity to look at the agenda prior to the meeting, so we have any questions or any discussion, or if, or I have anything, you know, something I can look into before the meeting, and another thing, I would got a copy of the agenda, email, and maybe each time we come to the meeting, maybe, um, we can get a copy of the budget, you, and the, I know, I would like that copy of the budget, because I think that would, um, lead to, uh, uh, just making sure, you know, to making sure that, uh, you know, looking at the budget each month and making sure, you know, that the, the, it's being, the finance is just being managed, and what you're gonna show it, whether or not finance is being managed, you know, um.
Usually, usually that's in there.
Yeah.
Um, I, like, they don't have it this month, uh, but I've always wanted them to have, and we have in the past, and have a ready, but what we can start doing is, is the week of, uh, the week of the meeting, earlier in the week, they can email everyone, that way you can, the end of, and now, if they email to you on Monday, and see if they chat.
Maybe, that's possible.
But they can email you a kind of agenda, because usually the day of, or the day before, Savannah and Chad did the other, talk about the agenda, and see what, if there's anything to add, and whatever.
Right.
Because they can send that out to everybody on Monday, and email them the budget, and that way, and if anybody wants to print it off, they can have it printed off, and y'all can go and get it.
That's fine.
And, and for you, man, the chairman, you want it.
That's fine.
But basically, they can start, because I, I live at that too, here in, uh, international. First of week of meeting, they can send that out to everybody, and like I said, if you want to print it off, you said, no, you can, you can get it out, you can read it on that.
That's fine, that's cool. And the last thing that I had was, um, and I don't know if I need to bring this to Chad, or whatever, or probably to Sam, because I've had a conversation with a couple of, uh, one of the former employees, and, um, one or two city employees, is there some type of evaluation system for our city employees? You know, I, I know, like, I teach schools, and we get evaluated three times a year, we gotta send out an evaluation system that we, uh, go through with our faculty and things like that, you know, uh, different criteria, or goals, or whatever the case may be, it's on that evaluation sys, you know, that evaluation document, let me say it like that, or you send it to computer, we have a way to evaluate our employees, uh, but sometimes we might say, well, you know, I'm just using that as an example, like, uh, I want, you know, somebody to do something, and, you know, there's a goal, or something, but if I can evaluate that person properly, you know, sometimes if people like to deserve another chance, they may get another chance, they may not, but if I don't keep, uh, you know, if I don't keep, uh, proper evaluations, uh, documents on them, then how can I, you know, legitimize that, I can get this person go on, I can keep this person, but I still like to know, based on my supervisor's point of view, you know, how I'm doing? Evaluation process. I'm just asking.
Would you get the personal policy out? Another, Jeff, because I, I'm reaching for last year, but I, I wanted to start going, the department heads, I don't know how often a year, once or twice a year, department heads have a meeting and evaluation with, with each employee, and then, I said, and then the city manager does, the department heads, the mayor does, the city manager, uh, and we, we need to make that into our, our, our policy, if it is or not, but, uh, work on that, and, and we can bug on that and put it in our policy, too. But what's about, I mentioned, it's going to happen last year, and it just, just never, it never happened, and I think that's a good thing, and now that we've got our all this done, and the budget done, it gives the city manager something to go by, they need to have meetings anyway with the department heads, going over the budgets, how we got it right, and the line items right, with accountability, the department heads need to be working off of their budget, but they don't have a budget to work off of. And, and so, I think the fact that we're building, kind of, gives city managers something to talk with the department heads about, and then the department heads need to have those meetings with, not the budget meetings, but meetings with the employees under their department.
I agree, I mean, that's how we, that's how I, I would.
We need to look at the, uh, the void policy, and it's not a very, we can move it, we add it, yeah.
And we would look into that, Chad, Chad, we can do that, see, because we have an evaluation process, but employees, we need to first see the manager, we, Chad, I want to not just say, I just wanna get rid of somebody, not, you know, you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, that, that's, look.
We need something like that in place. Thank you for your time.
Alright, Mark. Alright, um, we do need you on the late session for personnel, uh, and that's it for direct meeting.
Oh, gee.
Uh. You, you, I'm, I'm, I'm a room, it's been after you, windows, I have.
Okay, hey, well, alright, so, that brings us a little bit about evaluations. I do evaluations every six months with my personnel, that's, that's the way I've been twenty-seven years plus, that's what I've been doing, so I, I do evaluation every six months, so I just want to do it, but, alright, so, there's two things that I have, uh, the first one is, uh, I'm trying, I would like to request to auction off, like, some of the profile we got, since we have new ones in, uh, we don't need a whole bunch of cars just to be sitting in, so that's, that's a request from that.
Send some of the cars, some of the squad cars?
Yeah.
You know how D and G?
Man.
You have a car, you want to auction out?
Uh, three, let's say two.
Do you need a whole?
Yeah, that was how that, that, I was actually gonna ask that, just if you had cars, and I've got some new ones in, I didn't ask for any, I didn't need that, they have the radiators.
You just got two?
Yes, just two, correct, well, let's just say three, and then, uh. You may have to do it, Mr. Bill. But, um, yeah, but, let's say three.
Alright, I, I, I'm good with that.
My question to, my chief, seven, three, two?
Right, just say three.
Three, three, uh, I need some cars. You got to say.
Seven.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, alright, let's carry it.
Hey, the next one I hear, like, that is in your, you always pack it, it's called the A E D, which is a, uh, automated external simulator.
Uh, this one is like, oh, uh, well, I was passing around, sorry.
We don't care either.
We got them, um, yeah, so, yeah.
And it, it's two ports on there, there are one for two units, and then there's another one for six units, and those are for the patrol car, we have two of them that's for on-site, just in case, one for the, uh, city hall, and one for the police department, just in case somebody having to fall out or something, or have, uh, cardiac arrest up at the office, then we can have that assistable, so that, uh, you know, every bit of the council stays alive. And even looking at the cost, if, even if we had to cut it down to like, maybe one, uh, one A E on-site, and then four vehicles, we can do that, it's just something that needs to, needs to be in place because of, uh, because of safety factor. Just, you know, you never know, uh, you need it until you need it, don't have it.
You say you want any vehicle?
Yes, and one of each vehicle, then have one up here, you know, at city hall, the police department, just in case.
I just see the total, but total, not for you.
Well, this has, uh, eight plus two, but what we can do, and my thought is to get, let's say, five.
So, you're trying to shorten, or do you need more?
Well, I, I was trying to shorten it so it'd be feasible, but with the total rising, six seventy, with the eight plus two, that's around the same as about twelve thousand, same as the, uh, the regular system, so, those numbers can be maneuvered or adjusted, I don't want to cut it to the regular side of it.
We can start off with two, if there's one there, any questions about, um, like, income service and all?
Yeah. Because they have to be.
With the A Ds?
Because they have to be calibrated or anything, not like.
No, they, they don't.
At the hard start, they do those, and I would say.
It is great.
It was one of them.
Yes, yes. What about training for the technical operating?
Uh, all officers are already trained with the A Ds, we just don't have them, but that's, that's easy, we can always, uh, bring in an instructor, and that's what, that's what we'll do, so they can train everybody up here at the office to, uh, know how to operate the piece of equipment, so it doesn't do, it doesn't do anybody good if we got to sit there and know how to operate, so we have training for that.
We always learn, and this is how we got people, that is different than.
The hard start is all the ones that tell you what. So you don't have to guess if there's a fourth or not, did you?
Yeah. I, I would be in, I would be in training for the A Ds too, but it's usually at the end of the meeting, and it's pretty quick, and it's, the city hall meetings, when we got the dummies out there, and if you had one, I would, I would, you know, it's been, it's been a year since I've been, and it might come back to me, because I just remember them, it, you know, uh, and that's. I don't want, I would like for our officer, whoever's got them, to be currently trained, not just in certain training one time.
Oh, yeah, that, yes, like, every, everybody can train on it, uh, law enforcement, and, and other personnel up there can train. Oh, yeah, that, yes, like, every, everybody can train on, uh, law enforcement and, and other personnel up there can train on the same, same way. And then also with that, we'll do the A D, uh, and then also the C P R, so they can have both of those, uh, those tools in their two cars.
I'm there, Janessa, at L H school, she does that training every year via her, she's hosting, you know, C P R, A E D, uh, the charity, the kids, uh, and that, that's just equipment also, so you may be, get her out. We've got our A E D.
No, we don't, we, we have one, but, uh, yeah, and that does not work.
And he, and the one that's, um, trained us on last year, he gave instruction, everything, tells you what to do with each step.
Could we, could we start out with two of them, one week shift?
Well, I, well, how about, one up here, two a week?
One, one up here, and two, two, one week shift.
Correct.
Uh, but that is, you know, that, that, what's it, that is, what we're, what we got to spend it on, the, the radio system, and, and some of these, it's, uh, I mean, we could probably add more later, but right now, it's not, it's not, right now is not, not the time to be adding it, right now, but we can add more later.
Right.
Uh, but I think we could, you know, I think we could swing freedom, that would give you shift one, and that would be one up here. But I'd like to make sure they get current training, just from our literature, and I do remember, I'm in your eye, it tells you what to do, but it's, it's still, you know, we need to make sure they have current training on that. Now, the, okay, one is the on-site A E D, I guess the heart start, F R S A E D is for the control car, right?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, so that would be, about forty-five dollars total profit.
Yeah, because we don't, we don't, we probably don't need the cabinet that goes in, we put it in the designated spot, we can find some detail there.
Alright. Yeah, I recommend we get two for the control cars, and one for the city hall. Like I said, it's one of the things that, when you maybe, well, haven't, we should have it.
Get two for the control car, the one that's going, oh, or give that A E D to the one that's working it, and they got to pick up it, or, or. Get this one here.
Oh, because I, I, I have a plethora of the stuff, lack of ready. I know that, and I like that.
Well, uh, I motion on the fifth and third A Ds, uh, two control cars, and all for the city, up there at the city. Miss Val, come on, boss.
Alright, do we have a second?
Here.
Alright, all in favor? Alright, push carry. Alright, um, now we need to go to second session.